To the council and committee of the whole meeting for November 21st, 2023. On your desk you have a revised agenda, including some addendums. So to open the meeting this evening, I will ask councillor Pereira to read our land acknowledgement, please.
Nous souhaitons faire un moment pour souligner l'importance du territoire sur lequel nous sommes ressenti. La municipalité de West Nippising reconnaît avec respect que nous sommes réunis sur les terres ancestrales du peuple Anishlaabie, sur les territoires traditionnels des premières nations nippising, d'Hauques, d'Émorgami, désignés par le traité Rebeisot qui a... Nous honorons leur bien historique avec le territoire et nous valorisons leur contribution considérable de façon à renforcer la communauté. En faisant ce faisant, nous réaffirmons notre engagement et notre responsabilité envers la réconciliation et l'amélioration de notre compréhension des peuples autochtones locaux et de leur culture.
Merci conseilère Pereira. Okay, onto number two, I'll take any declarations of pecuniary interest? Saying none, move on to, first we'd like to approve the addendum.
It is moved by councillor Restool and seconded by councillor Pereira. Be it resolved that the addendum for the meeting of council held on November the 21st, 2023 be approved as presented.
All in favor? Carried? And now put on the agenda.
It is moved by councillor Pereira and seconded by councillor Restool. Be it resolved that the agenda for the meeting of council held on the 21st day of November, 2023 be adopted as presented.
All in favor? Carried? Okay, next item on the agenda is number four, delegations and petitions. In the addendum, you'll see we have received a petition to implement a warming centre in West Nippising for our vulnerable population. The petition is hereby received and will go on the agenda for discussion at the next meeting. And now on to committee of the whole. We have, we'll start with the social services and health committee. And we have two items which I will pass to councillor Jamie Restool, chair of our social services and health.
Mayor, as you mentioned, we have two items on the agenda tonight. The first that we have is a homelessness update and I'm going to ask if our CEO could provide an overview of some of the activities that have taken place over the last couple of weeks?
No.
Okay, item number two we're gonna...
Okay, where it's been, has it only been two weeks? With respect to the homelessness update, I think that provided council with an update as of a couple of weeks ago with respect to issues that we are facing, that we have been facing throughout the summer in various locations. But specifically that we are facing on a location that really is not really public property. It's property owned by the municipality, but it has very specific purposes. So as I indicated at that point, we had a meeting that was held three weeks ago and I won't repeat myself with the heads of organizations. And what I had found was that there wasn't a lot of integration and dialogue that I was aware of, at least at my level, with respect to creating action for specific issues. And so again, I had indicated my frustration, I suppose, with that situation in correspondence to the DSAB. And in that I discussed about wanting to have individuals not remain at this location off of Coors South Street. Since that time, Mr. Chair, I can indicate to you that there has been a lot of work. First thing that transpired was a high-level meeting politically between yourself, Madame Mayor, so as deputy mayor, mayor and deputy mayor, and the chair, vice-chair of DSAB with myself and the acting CEO. We had a good dialogue and a good exchange of information that I'm sure you can speak to later. But with respect to the general expectations or feelings that we had here in West Nippising and how we were hoping for, on a go-forward basis, more coordination and support. In my opinion, we've received that and personally, I'm very thankful for the work that, and the leadership that Melanie Shea and the staff at DSAB have exhibited with respect to pulling people together. And so we have been working to obtain solutions, or a solution, or I suppose solutions is the appropriate way of... with respect to the encampment, we'll call it, on Coors South Street. I can indicate to council without sharing too many specifics that we are well underway in the implementation of a plan. The plan will involve providing alternative solutions to the individuals who are in the encampment. Possibly not solutions, that's probably a longer term, but options to the individuals that are in the encampment. And we are planning on working with them in the very near future. I don't necessarily want to have, for a variety of reasons, public safety and also unnecessary concern. I'll keep the specifics with the agencies who are working on the plan. But council should be aware that there is a plan, you know, that is forthcoming. We are working again with DSAB and they're recognized. And I hate to be difficult, but I've mentioned this to a variety of groups that, or a variety of individuals, that as a government who provides funding to another agency, a government agency, who then contracts out to other organizations such as LIPI, Low Income Peoples Initiative, and True Self, we are working with those agencies through DSAB to implement a strategy. There are other agencies as well, but so basically that's where we're at with respect to this specific situation. And, you know, I could tell you that I feel a little bit better this meeting than I did two weeks ago with respect to the cooperation and the coordinated efforts that people seem to be putting in. I had two meetings yesterday with a group of individuals, meeting this afternoon with a group. We're planning on meeting tomorrow morning with another group. So I'm happy as to how things are progressing. I know that they're perhaps not progressing in a manner that certain individuals in the public would like us to do more quickly and with perhaps less compassion. But in my opinion, we're balancing everybody's rights and concerns and we're moving in the appropriate manner. But it is not our intention to allow people at that location to remain there. And I've said that and I'm consistent about that. And so the plan is to have them find alternative places and/or be sheltered by DSAB. And some of its partners have been finding places locally and in other areas for these individuals. So that's all, I will speak on that. If there are any questions, Mr. Chair?
Oh, thanks for those comments, Mr. Barbour, for sure. Are there any questions or comments from any councillors around the table or the mayor, not just councillors?
Okay. I will speak because it was indeed an interesting meeting that we had with DSAB. And, you know, it's a really difficult situation, you know. People in the general community like to simplify the solutions or what's available to us in order to address these kinds of issues within the community. And there are no easy fixes, you know. I often like to refer to the fact that, you know, I spent my teens and early twenties in the Vancouver area and I used to take a bus from the suburbs to downtown to go to work. And in 1992, you could look to the left and lie right, this bus route went right down East Hastings Street and see the devastation on the streets of Vancouver. That is 30 years ago in a large city like Vancouver that has unabounded resources and a lot of incredibly intelligent and devoted people who have been working on solving those problems for 30 years. And my brother was just out here from that area last week. And, you know, according to him, it's worse than it ever was. So, you know, there can be all kinds of efforts put in to try to address these issues and there's no guarantee of success. And so then what is a small community like West Nippising to do? So it's, you know, it's inspiring to see the compassion and the desire to help make a difference to people in need by the members of our community. And I don't want to discount what's being done. It's one of the reasons why West Nippising is so great is because there are a lot of people who care and we see that every time there are any kinds of disasters, any kinds of fires, any kind where people undergo traumas, the community steps up to help. And it's really inspiring. But as Mr. Barbour said, I think it's also incredibly important that when we're addressing these kinds of complex social issues that do involve our most vulnerable residents, that it's done by people and groups that have the appropriate education, qualifications and professional experience and working within legitimate organizations. And as a government, that's what we're trying to do, that's our role. There are systems set up, there are service delivery providers. Our job is trying to ensure that the services are being provided to our residents within the framework that we have to work with. And, you know, it's just, it's, sorry, it is a really, really, really difficult kind of situation. Many of the people who we see in experiencing unsheltered homelessness, they have a lot of complex barriers to housing. It is not as simple as a roof and a meal. And in a small area like this, we do not have the capacity to offer these specialized services. And this is everything from healthcare to mental health services, to counseling, to referrals to education, to emergency shelters, to temporary shelters, to transitional housing. And we need to be strategic in the way that, the way that we try to bring people to the services. You know, I think the DSAB, when you look at, and over the last couple of weeks, I've done a lot of research. I never thought that I would be reading, you know, hundreds of pages on reports, whether it's from the Northern Policy Institute or the different responses from different municipalities. I've spoken to mayors across Northern Ontario and colleagues from other parts of the province on what their responses are. And because every municipality across the country and definitely across the provinces dealing with these types of things. But North Bay has also, in defense of DSAB, done a really good job. They have a wonderful new facility that's been opened that offers supportive housing. They have emergency shelters. They have programs in place that are cooperations with the health board and the hospital that offers nursing outreach into the community to make sure that the medical needs of people who are unsheltered are addressed. And so, you know, unfortunately, in West Nippising, we do not have the capacity to offer those kinds of services. The services are offered through DSAB and they're offered in North Bay. So, you know, it's, sorry, it becomes very difficult. So the fact that we are only 20 minutes away from North Bay and we are a municipality of a population of 15,000 people, it is very unlikely that DSAB or the provincial government are going to fund duplicative services within our municipality that can be accessed, you know, in a community at such close proximity to us. So, you know, it leaves us in a bind. As Jay's, sorry, as Mr. Barbour said, we have been, he's been meeting with DSAB more regularly than I have. But councillor Restool and I did have a meeting. And, you know, some of our, the things that we'd like to do is make sure that DSAB continues to provide increased levels of service to our community. I think they understand now that there are, there are things that need to be addressed here. There are people that they need to serve in this community. We are advocating for increased appropriate professional care, support services and shelter. And, you know, we are asking to have more dedicated professional outreach workers who are connected to legitimate service providers and part of their coordinated access network. And, you know, we continue to work on those initiatives. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll just go around one more time before I share some comments. So, Cassie?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Some individuals do use our services, like Alliance Centre. And we do have services here that do help with the mental health aspect of individuals. And with the group that we have here as well, they help with the support, that middle connection to help them to get to their appointments until they can be... Without a shelter, they're only living on survival. So if they had a shelter or warming centre where they can be not having to worry about being outside and they want to be in our community, this is where they live. They went to school here, they have family here. So for them to be moved somewhere else, disconnected from family or friends or support, to me, that makes things more difficult for them.
Yeah, I know. See, before I share, you know, some comments and I appreciate it. It's been shared so far this evening with the update on some of the technical things that are taking place and some of the thoughts that people have around the table in terms of what the issue is. And I've been involved prior to COVID for a number of years in council and then returning back for this term. It's definitely, and I think we've already mentioned this in other meetings, but it's an issue that's really grown incredibly since, you know, pre-COVID. And the challenges that the community is facing. And these, you know, that visible homelessness issue was something that may have not even existed or was very, very minimal. I want to appreciate, I appreciate the meetings that have taken place with our CEO, with the mayor, with myself, with other groups, service providers within the community. And I think that a meeting with DSAB has really helped them step up in terms of being aware of the issues that are here that they may not have been aware of previously and really come to the table with open minds and with good intentions of continuing their relationship here and growing their relationship with the municipality and with our service providers. And, you know, our CEO mentioned a table that had meetings in the past and will continue to meet. And I thought it was a great, you know, commitment from DSAB that their acting CEO is going to be the individual who sits at this table to make sure that action items that come from the discussions will be actioned where DSAB has those responsibilities, not something that's being, you know, delegated to a junior member within the organization. It is the head who's going to be here to speak with and listen to the service providers within the community here. And just speaking with Ms. Shea a couple of times, I think what they want to do at DSAB as well is just make sure that they're communicating better as well in terms of the assistance services that are there for people across, across the region here. I think it's really important to remember, like Madame Mayor said, we do pay a levy to DSAB and they are responsible for providing those services here, much like we do with policing and we have the OPP in place, it's not up to council or the mayor to... We have an organization that we pay fees to them to take care of those activities and services within the community. It's the same thing with DSAB on the social services front. That's where it's contracted to, that's where services need to come from. And I, you know, I really believe that they're more aware of what's going on in West Nippising and stepping up to the plate in terms of services that they provide and teaming up with the organizations here within the community to address this growing issue within our community. You know, some of the smaller things, but very important things that we might not be aware of, I might not have been aware of them, but it was mentioned that there was a couple of individuals who were housed within a local hotel and I knew that that was an option. I think one of the challenges that we had was having businesses within the community take on or come to the plate to provide those services or open their doors. And some of the other smaller things are even storage of individuals' materials or belongings or stuff while they're getting, you know, integrated into the services that are available to them. And even further than that, pet care, I know some of the individuals have pets and that's something that DSAB does offer when these individuals do come, you know, and are ready to accept the services that are there that'll help them from a health and safety standpoint. So we're going to see a lot more communications from DSAB and I know we're going to be meeting more regularly with them and I know that this is actually an agenda item in terms of what's happening within West Nippising at their meeting tomorrow afternoon that will be part of. So it's, we're gaining a lot of traction, in my opinion, in terms of the issue. But I think it's important to make sure that where we can, we have individuals who need services to go to where the services are. And that's the structure that we live in right now. Talking about a warming centre or a low barrier shelter, things like that are things that are longer term. But if you look outside today, the snow is falling and the temperature is dropping. It's important for those who, organizations that have relationships with individuals who need this support, that we're encouraging them to go to where the services are for the time being because that's what exists right now. And that's what's going to help in terms of keeping those individuals safe, as healthy as they can be in terms of weather that's coming and it's going to get colder before it gets warm. So I'm hopeful that our grassroots group here, who work with these individuals, will steer them where they can to go to the services that exist right now. And that's where we're at right now. It does take time to put some of those things in place, there is cost to it. We are going into budget, DSAB is going into budget. Everybody's open-minded, but for today and tomorrow and the next short while, we need to access services that are there right now, in my opinion. So I'm hopeful that people do take advantage of that. Saw councillor Pereira had his hand up.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Restool. Just curious, which agency is funded by DSAB in West Nippising? Like there's the Allianz Centre that I know of, is this one of them? No? Is there any agencies that's funded in West Nippising from DSAB?
Through you, Mr. Chair, right now with respect to homelessness, there is an agency that is contracted out by DSAB where there is an outreach worker that attends to the homeless, the homeless individuals in West Nippising on a weekly basis, on every Wednesday. And this individual reports is also, is comprised of the local group, but they're not yet recognized or official with DSAB or contracted out by DSAB. This individual though reports to her organization, but also then sits on a variety of boards and committees and shares that information accordingly. But at this point, it's the one organization that basically has a contract with DSAB to handle this.
I would also say though, through the Coordinated Access Program, any of the service providers listed on there, so whether that's the Crisis Centre, I think the, well, the hospital funds the Crisis Centre. The AIDS Committee of North Bay is also a service provider. LIPI serves people throughout the district. So any of the organizations that run within the district Coordinated Access Team, any of those organizations will take calls and serve people to the best of their ability or refer them to the agencies or organizations that are best suited to serve that individual's needs. So one of the interesting things and, you know, like sometimes the work that they do gets overlooked, but all of the DSABs are required to participate or implement a coordinated access program. And part of that coordinated access program is actually a computer database system where individuals who do agree to be listed on the by-name list are entered if they start any kind of intake process and undergo assessments by professionals as to what the barriers are, what kind of supports or services they would need to transition from unsheltered to stably housed, which is often a very long process. As I say, you know, for many people who are chronically homeless, it is, there are a lot of barriers to overcome. So there is a really good system in place where people can be referred to the right type of help because each individual has very different needs to get them from, you know, where they are now to where they'd like to be as far as being stably housed. So, you know, I think the coordinated access piece of it and it doesn't matter who you call, you will get relevantly triaged into the system. And those include, and I think it needs to be mentioned, programs that are there to prevent homelessness. So people who are at risk of being homeless, you know, because of back payments or overdue bills, there are services that can be accessed through DSAB for those as well to try to keep people who are precariously housed from being unsheltered. And again, like the Coordinated Access Program is meant to be kind of a one-stop shop. Does that answer? Answer?
The issue is, the organizations serve Nippising District, but the question is which ones are based in West Nippising, there aren't.
Yeah.
They're district-wide.
Yeah.
So that's what I was indicating with respect to the individuals who are in the audience and providing on-the-ground services or not actually funded by DSAB and that the only homeless individuals who are getting care are from True Self on the Wednesdays, being recognized by DSAB. But of course, all of the other agencies that were listed are Nippising-based, so they're in North Bay, but they serve the Nippising District.
My thinking is, I don't know, I don't know much about the problem and how to get involved. But my thinking is, like, we've been paying DSAB, I guess, for a long time. And the, the problem is not, wasn't born yesterday. I don't think we should have to put pressure on people to, to change their mindset to come to West Nippising. I don't know, I'm just, I'm just saying, do we get, do we get a fair share from DSAB? Just thinking.
Oh, you want me to add?
Well, it's just that.
You know, when you look at, just as a, as a rough thing, as when you look at the $3.4 million, there are other services provided to municipality for that contribution outside of services for homelessness, for homelessness. So there is paramedic service is paid for and funded by DSAB. Ontario Works, the provision of Ontario Works and the administration of the program is also paid for and organized by DSAB. There are several ways in which they support affordable and geared-to-income housing throughout the region. So they have some of their own units that are in this community as well as being a partner to our not-for-profit Housing Corporation. So when you look at the $3.4 million, it, it is a lot of other services outside just the, the services for homelessness or people at risk of homelessness or unsheltered people. So I don't know that they had been aware of the extent of the, of the issues that we were having in West Nippising until, you know, very recently. And, you know, whether or not that's an excuse, they are, they are stepping up now. And like I say, we are pushing not only for, you know, kind of increased services, making sure we actually get some boots on the ground within the community. But also, and people will say it matters or it doesn't matter, but also increasing representation, you know, is one of the things that we talked to them about because at the board level, we're not fairly represented. And, you know, does one extra seat out of 12 make a difference? Maybe not hugely, but it's one extra voice at the table. So, you know, I, I can't say whether we get our money's worth or not. It's, you know, it doesn't matter because at the end of the day, they are a legislated service provider. We do not have an option as to whether or not we choose to utilize their services. It is mandated by the province that this organization delivers these programs and these services that I just outlined on behalf of municipalities. And that is the way that the governance structure is set up in Northern Ontario. There's 11 DSABs, so 11 different regions that have this exact same organization, whether it's Simmons-Hoffgren, whether it's Conora, they all run under the same group. And the, the way that we are charged and the amount that we are charged is dictated by the provincial government.
Okay, thank you. I just always take time to, if Mr. Barba wanted to add anything or not.
No, the issue is homelessness, though, not DSAB on the agenda.
Okay, so I won't go back again because I've asked already a couple of times. If there aren't any other questions, we'll, we'll move on from this particular issue. And I know we're going to have further updates as we move forward. It's not, it's a, it's a very difficult subject matter. And I've spoken with a couple of colleagues at DSAB. If we knew what the answer was, we wouldn't have the problem right now. So it's something we're going to continue to keep working at. And I know we'll have updates based on meetings that we have and actions that we have within the community. So we'll look forward to other discussions on this in future meetings. So the second item that we have on the agenda under Social Services and Health is the motion, Counselor Tessie, regarding the eviction of homelessness individuals from municipal property is brought forward at her last meeting and is on our agenda.
I require a second to the motion.
Needs a second.
I need it. It is moved by Counselor Tacey and seconded by Counselor Perrin. Whereas homeless individuals have no shelter or access to a warming center in West Nippising, and whereas No More Tears West Nippising has been working to help, to help individuals since February 2023 and has created an outreach day-night team as well as a soup kitchen. And whereas West Nippising residents and organizations have supported and kindly donated to help the No More Tears West Nippising homeless initiatives. And whereas Our Lady of Sorrows Church has provided access to their hall and kitchen to the No More Tears West Nippising Soup Kitchen for preparation and serving of meals to those in need. And whereas the season of cold weather is upon us and the homeless have no warming center for cold days and nights. And whereas No More Tears West Nippising is seeking council's assistance to help homeless individuals in our community. And whereas No More Tears West Nippising has been advocating for a shelter in West Nippising and is aware that it will not happen overnight. And whereas No More Tears West Nippising is seeking that council establish an ad hoc committee to ensure encampments are not removed by force until an alternative solution is established. And whereas the municipality of West Nippising contributes $3 million per year to DSAB, could set a percentage, could set a percentage be allocated strictly for homeless initiatives? Be it resolved that due to the critical need to help homelessness, West Nippising bylaw will not evict any homeless person from municipal property until a warming center is established.
Thank you for that. I'll turn it over to Counselor Tessie, she brought the motion forward, if you'd like to speak to the motion.
Mr. Chair, yes, homelessness in West Nippising. The reason for the motion, to establish a committee to ensure no one sleeps outdoors in winter, to establish temporary and permanent solutions to resolve homelessness crisis in West Nippising. So for volunteers with the help of generous residents, businesses and organizations were instrumental in helping homeless individuals. As not everyone has access to Facebook, please allow me to, the time to share some information and factual data. No More Tears West Nippising currently has 32 volunteers. The No More Tears West Nippising Grassroots Organization was created February 2023 by starting a Facebook page to bring awareness to the fact that the North Bay shelters were full and alternative options were not available in Sturgeon Falls for the homeless in West Nippising. No More Tears West Nippising's mission is to provide the basic needs of the unhoused population of West Nippising and to connect them to community supports as a way to empower them as we advocate for a low-barrier shelter in our community. The group provides activities, updates and recognition to all donors and soup kitchens initiatives. The group provides weekly updates and statistics on their group page for their outreach wellness checks with the homeless individuals and those who have gained access to temporary housing. The day outreach are Tuesdays and Thursday mornings and the night outreach are Mondays and Fridays. Wednesdays, the food bank and soup kitchen assist with their food needs. And on Wednesdays, we have the help for the outreach with the True Self organization. For the week of November 17th, the night outreach team delivered 16 food packages, hot chocolates, socks, hand and feet warmers and a tent. Day outreach team delivered sandwiches, pasta, smiley cookies, hot chocolate socks, hand and feet warmers, hats and mitts. On Wednesday, volunteers assist service users to attend the food bank and alliance center. On Saturday of that week, volunteers assisted a homeless individual to relocate them to a motel room funded by DSAB. A volunteer liaison from No More Tears West Nippising Act has been collaborating with DSAB to facilitate rooms for some of the unhoused. Currently, two individuals have moved to a motel room. Total hours of outreach for the week of November 17th were 31.5 hours and assisted a total of 20 individuals. A plan is needed to resolve the current emergency and solution to resolve homelessness. Current emergency, there are approximately six encampments with consistent, which consisted of tents, trailers, ISAT. And within these encampments, there are approximately 20 to 30 individuals spread across West Nippising. DSAB does have a portfolio to address homelessness. What is DSAB's position in assisting this emergency need for individuals residing in tents, encampments in West Nippising? I know the province increased the annual funding for its homelessness provincial program to DSAB by an additional $3 million, which was announced by the media on April 13, 2023, for a total of $5.3 billion towards homelessness prevention for 2023, 2024. The committee's safety and wellness plan found on the municipality's website indicates on page 42 to investigate a warming center. This plan was adopted by past council and shared with the current council for awareness during last year's planned session, term planned session. Council approved $10,000 in 2023's budget as an emergency funding. What is asked of my fellow counselors is, A, support the need to have a committee with community stakeholders, partner, not-for-profit, private sector, various funding partners, DSAB, community futures, federal, provincial agencies and community volunteers to prioritize a warming center. B, for the committee to work on a plan outlining current and future solutions to resolve homelessness in West Nippising. C, for an emergency declaration to be done by Mayor Rocham because we have homelessness people residing in West Nippising and their lives are at risk. Whatever money is spent by the municipality for warming center, a plan on how to recoup these monies can be brought forward by staff to council for discussion. To do nothing today is unacceptable. To pass the buck does not save lives. A Western Pacific plan is needed for current emergency and for future resolutions. If the committee is established, its actual mandate would be to locate a warming center, ideas on location and cause, locate a space to keep the goods, donation, emergency supplies provided to the homeless cause, operational budget and update to council. Thank you.
Any comments or further?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to add, there's, might be an incorrect statement in that because I called one of the shelters in North Bay today and they said they had space and it fluctuates daily, so to keep calling every day. So as of right now, the individuals could go there if they chose to. Just wanted everybody to be informed about that. Thank you.
Okay. Are there comments or questions towards the notice of motion that was put forward?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just, thanks for all the information, first of all. I was just, kind of got a little lost. So the motion is regarding which topic exactly, though? That's why I'd like to.
Yeah, I think I need to comment on the structure of what's going on here. Motions in general are actions. And so the way this motion, and I don't know who the motion is. Usually motions are, are, are coming from a member of council wanting to put a motion on the agenda and that came from you, Counselor Tacey. Where you were asking or making a request of this body corporate, you would put that more in the resolution. So be it resolved that you're asking for a moratorium on enforcement and that a committee be struck and that be, because you have a lot of whereas. And whereas is are not action items in law. And so there's a bit of a problem with, with the way it's structured. Now, council wants to address those issues. There's a few, there's a few procedural issues. I'd also point out that in the, in the same time, a petition is received by a group that you represent talking about establishing a warming center. And that is going to be addressed in our procedural bylaw next meeting. And so what do you do right now? Do you discuss it now and forget the petition? Or, or whatever. But in law, what you're asking for in the clean, black and white request in this resolution is that you would be looking at the resolution to ask or to, or to direct our bylaw enforcement people or our staff in this case to not act on this situation until a solution is found for a local or for a warming center, which I have to infer from the presentation is a local warming center and that. So, so basically, you're being requested to not act until a local warming center solution has been found. I think that's what you're asking for, right?
Well, to get a committee together to create a warming center, yeah.
Well, you didn't put that in your resolution, though, is the issue. So, so if council wants to talk about establishing a committee for a warming center, they can talk about that now, but I believe that's what the petition was, was requesting as well. And so the petition requesting a local warming center and what council's discussion and debate would be at that time would be, A, do we want one? B, is it us to do or is it DSAB? And C, if it is us, how do we want to implement it? Do we want to engage members who are very interested in the public? And so how do you handle that right now? Right now, what you have is council could waive the petition part and talk whether you want to have a local warming center right now and discuss that. If, if Madam Mayor, you wish to waive procedure or discuss, or wait until the petition and put it back on the agenda for a local warming center first meeting in December and then just discuss what the resolution says now. So unfortunately, you know, I have to go by what the, how our procedures in our law works.
Thank you.
If I would have, and it's not hindsight, it's 2020, so it's, but if we would have had, if we were going to give you some advice, we had to reword it so that it met your intentions. And I don't think that this resolution meets your intentions, quite frankly. I think that you want a lot more than what this resolution wants, just the way it's worded.
Okay, so currently is to make sure that the encampment is not removed until they're found a place. And then the petition will follow the, the other requests for, for warming.
That's cleaner.
So just for clarification, the discussion and the vote, I guess?
Yeah. Could we have Madam Clerk just read the resolution portion of the motion again so that council is clear what is being asked of them?
Be it resolved that due to the.
Jamie's chair.
I'm sorry. Be it resolved that due to the critical need to help homelessness, West Nippising bylaw will not evict any homeless person from municipal property until a warming center is established.
So I'll go back to, to council to see if there's any comments specific to that one resolved piece of the document they have. Counselor Stanley?
So through you, Mr. Chair. I'm not opposed to what is being proposed, but my biggest concern is if we agree to have our bylaw officer ignore what's there right now until there's a warming center, when is there going to be a warming center? So what if we don't have the funds for a warming center? What if we're not able, and I'm not saying that we don't require one by no means, but what if we're not able to get a warming center? What then? So how long does this last, right? How long do we go with the individuals being on municipal property? Individuals have already been removed from municipal properties. And to start now, I think, until there's a warming center, it, it's very vague. I mean, who knows and when will there be a warming center? Not that we don't require one by no means, but, you know. And for a warming center, for us as a municipality to put one in place, what does that entail? Are we going to have to hire staff? Are we going to have to have one properly built? Are we going to have to have the, our engineers, like, or whatever? So this can take months and years or a year to have something put in place properly. So what do we do then, right? That's just nice.
Thank you for those comments. Any other comments on the resolution in front of us?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. Thanks for clearing it up there and just making sure what my question would be. But I guess to kind of add on to what Counselor Stanley was mentioning is, I'd be a little worried as well, just. I'd be a little worried as well, just with the idea that we don't know when or if this would be the case. And then I do also strongly believe that when if I'm hung there, I'm not a professional in this, but when people are removed from public property or municipal property, I don't believe that the intention is just move and figure it out. I think the intention is to move and help these individuals and try and get them in these safer location or to get the help that they may need. It may not be here in West Nipissing, but the idea that there is that care as well, to me, I think, I wouldn't like the idea that we would just leave them there and then have a chance of during a minus forty day if there is no warming center or heavy snow that melts and it becomes like, well, snow, ice melts, becomes very heavy, and these guys are in guys are in tents. I think that's just a little dangerous, and then we're going to have some in some of those locations, I believe it's kind of a snow dump in site. And then there's, if there's any sort of liability on the municipality, I just, I'm not too sure about agreeing to not removing them. I think there is some well-meaning in removing some of these individuals from these sites, and we can't look away from that either. Everyone wants, nobody wants to have anyone freeze to death outside, especially during our cold winters. It's how cold it was last year, but I don't think that this would be a solution necessarily to solving the homelessness crisis. I think it's, it may actually be the other way around. It wouldn't really help the problem, which is my opinion. Thank you.
So I guess what I'm hearing is there's a few installation of those tents, and some of them are pretty well equipped where they are right now. So to move them today would be would be dangerous for them to try to reset, reset up. And I agree, there's going to be a timeline, there's going to be a limit. But can't we tweak that resolution to say, okay, for this winter? Because it seems like everybody's looking for solutions, and it's just been lately, the last few weeks or months. So anyway, to me, to move them at this point would be, I think would be dangerous to them. Let's put a timeline on it, at least this winter, because I don't think we're doing anything with the property in the in the near future. I don't, we had it maybe for sale there, but if we put a time limit on it, I I would agree with that.
Councillor Gonye?
Just to make a comment, I do appreciate the work that's being done by these volunteers, help these people. There is a risk to this. I think what we need to do is exhaust all social services that are available to start with. And then at that point, once we know exactly what we're getting into, then we know, because who knows? If we accept this current resolution, we might have a thousand people coming to West Nipissing and signing up shop, which is a possibility because they know they're welcome, open arms, and there's nothing that we can do. So for that reason, I think we need to use all and exhaust all social services that are out there. In this situation, people might have to temporarily move to a different location to be able to be housed properly. And but until this is done, I can't accept as a councillor to accept this responsibility. Thank you.
Good for those comments, Councillor Gonye. Any others? I have some too, whatever.
Yeah, I mean, I would agree with Councillor Gonye, and I think also the way the resolution is worded leaves it open to any and all municipal properties, and it's a very, very broad statement that leaves our administration no options as far as, you know, if things at a location devolve, or if there are certain problems that need to be resolved. And, you know, at the end of the day, it's it, it puts municipality in a very hard position, and I will also say that from, just from a governance perspective, council impeding or trying to instruct on bylaw enforcement without changing bylaws is not really our role, in the same way that it's not our role to instruct the building inspector how to do their job there. The bylaw enforcement officer, like the building official, is an independent body that is meant to fully upload the bylaws as they are written. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Tacye?
Question. So right now, we want to find a place for them to be housed. So if some of them cannot be housed, and then you remove them from that location, they're just going to move to another, like another place where they can be, and then you're going to keep moving until they have they're able to find a roof over there.
So if you're asking if that was a question or a comment, I guess I'm seeing it from an administration perspective and from a governance perspective, and I'll reiterate my update in that I am working with social service agencies to find the appropriate solutions that the experts at that table deem to be the appropriate solutions. You know, council can talk policy and can talk whatever, but I would caution about trying to find the social services and mental health and addiction health solution at this table and not leave it to the experts. And so, but rest assured, you know, I'll let the vote take place, but rest assured that any actions that we are taking, we are taking in conjunction with our partners and laws and concern for the individuals are met. And so that's all I can say at this point. But, but, you know, with respect to a hypothetical question on them not going or whatever, I don't have any of that data at this point. And then, of course, there'll be, you know, there'll be probably folks assisting them to find other locations if the locations proper to them are not acceptable. But at this point, it's very hypothetical, and I have learned how much I don't know by quarterbacking this and really relying on the Landon Mitchells from Lippi, who's, you know, forgotten more than I'll ever know. You know, the D S A people, the critical care, or whatever they're talking, the individuals that true self who do this for a living, those folks will be working in concert and finding solutions, and that's what we'll be supporting. But unless council, if council passes this resolution, then I will be telling them that, you know, we're not going to have our play in it, but our play in it is that we don't think that they should be where they're located. And the support that we've gotten from our other agencies is that this isn't necessarily the same as any public space. This is Memorial Park. You know, yesterday, we had a master, a major truck parking with heavy equipment in that property. We are responsible for ensuring the safety of people on our property, and if I can't ensure that safety, our insurances don't help us then either. There's a whole issue that's way wider than what you're seeing here. And so at that point, that's why we're relying on our social services partners to assist us to get the job done to properly take care of these individuals.
So Mr. Chair, I just like to request a recorded for the motion. I guess we're probably getting close to the end of the discussion. I just wanted to share a couple of points, and I think it's important, again, as popular or unpopular as the comment is, there are alternative solutions that exist right now. And unfortunately, they're not within West Nipissing, but they are within the region, and that's the structure that we're involved in right now for service delivery. It's, I wouldn't see any difference than specialized services at the North Bay Hospital that we can't offer here in West Nipissing. Individuals have to go to North Bay to receive those services, or they don't get them. We're working with our partners. We're being aggressive, if I can use the word aggressive, to get things done and move things forward in a good way. I concur with councillor St Louis's comments. We don't know how long this is going to take. And if it does take year or years or six months, it doesn't help us tomorrow. And if we're saying that we're okay with people staying in tents when it gets to minus forty, I think some of the liability might come back to us here, where we say, yeah, we approve this, they were okay, and if there's something that happens, then what happens? So it's, you know, I can't end, again, the comment as well, if this is worded, that we won't evict any homeless person from municipal property. So if they want to take over a couple of dressing rooms in the arena, we won't be able to evict them. It's not a, it's not a good solution. The solution is to get the individuals help and services that they need, and I think that's what everybody around the table wants. We want the health and safety of those individuals to take place. And I just couldn't support something that I'm saying, yes, we can leave them there in tents in the middle of January when it's minus forty with the wind chill, and we support that because that's what's best for them. I just can't do that. So if there's not any other comments, I will turn it to Madam Clerk for the recorded vote.
Councillor Cushing?
No.
Councillor Gonye?
No.
Councillor Nichol? Councillor Pedernay?
No on that motion.
Councillor Restool?
No.
Councillor Revard?
No.
Councillor St Louis?
No.
Councillor Tacye?
Yes.
Mayor, Mayor Thorpe?
No.
Motion is defeated.
So that concludes the Social Services and Health Committee portion. I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you very much, Councillor Restool. The next committee on the agenda is our Public Works Committee, and for that, I will pass the floor to our Chair of Public Works, Councillor Gonye.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So we've received on our package a road need study, which hopefully everybody got a chance to go through it a few times, as long before. And for this, I will pass it on to Ms. Henning to just explain a bit about what's going on. And we were waiting for this, this report for us, at least in the year.
Yes, thanks. So, yeah, we waited a while for this report, not because of the consultant that's currently do it, but when we first put out to do a road need study for West Nipissing, we actually didn't receive any bids on that tender. So then last fall, I believe, or early winter, we retained DM Wells to complete a road need study for us, and they've gone out and looked at all of our roads in West Nipissing. As you probably know, we have almost five hundred and fifty kilometers of roads. So this report and what you received, there's a whole bunch of Excel data and stuff that goes with it, kind of puts all of our roads, looks at all of the conditions of all of the roads, and prioritizes how we should be maintaining our roads, and I will, DM Wells, we've got Eric Saint Pierre. DM Wells on the screen here, and I'll let him go over the report.
Hello, everyone.
Can I just get the name again?
Hi, my, my name is Eric Saint Pierre. I'm an engineer at DM Wells. Can you hear me? Is my audio coming in nicely? Okay.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Just going to share my screen. Okay. So this is a short presentation to summarize the activities undertook for the twenty twenty-three road need study that we did for West Nipissing. This quick agenda. Sorry. I'll go over through, over the road need study methodology and activities. I'll give you a summary of the municipality's road infrastructure, a summary of the findings and budget considerations, a quick go-through of how we look at roadwork prioritization, and also a short note on the freestanding guide rail inventory, which we did as well. I'm sorry, I'm getting some feedback. Is there, is there, is there a question or?
No.
Okay, sorry. I'll ignore that feedback then. So the road need study methodology that we used, we've, it's kind of a hybrid model. We're using the, both the inventory manual for municipal roads from nineteen ninety-one. It's, this is a very common methodology in Ontario. It was used by the MTO. Lots of municipalities adopted it after the MTO gone out of the road need studies work or out of the, or just after, even after the subsidy stopped, or the direct subsidies from the MTO stopped. Well, we also combined this with the PCI methodology. So the MTO methodology is a very holistic methodology. It doesn't just look at what the road looks like. It takes, tries to estimate the condition of the road base, the surface condition, the geometry of the road for like the width, the alignment, the drainage, the maintenance demand. And then also, we combine that with the PCI methodology. PCI stands for pavement condition index. It's a scale from zero to a hundred. A hundred represents the theoretically best brand new, brand spanking new, perfect condition road, as zero would be completely impassable. So the PCI methodology that we used were based off the MTO's manuals for flexible and surface treated pavements. There is no PCI for gravel roads. There are comparable methodologies, like a GCI. However, it's really, it's apples to oranges at that point, and it's not, it's not, you're not required to have a PCI for your loose top surfaces, so we did not go through with that. And it's also much more subjective because we're trying to, we're going out there inspecting the road once and trying to estimate. It's just the GCI, like we have done it before. It's just that we found it's not as difficult to repeat. So roads, as per the inventory manual, we classify roads by rural, semi-urban, and urban, and as per the asset management regulation, we also classify them as local collector arterial. Road treatments were priorities based on traffic volume, treatment costs, extension of service life, and traffic volumes were based on limited counts conducted in twenty twenty-three. As you know, West Nipissing, a large portion of the road network is rural. You have a significant amount of semi-urban roads and a minority of urban roads. Your urban roads might increase if you convert your semi-urban cross-sections to urban cross-sections. In this case, I guess I should mention semi-urban means developed on both sides. Urban means you have curb and gutter, like kind of the urban cross-section, we have curb and gutter, underground drainage, the whole shebang, and rural would be undeveloped on both sides. Road surface type, vast majority of your roads are gravel or earth, but you also have a decent mix of hot mix and surface treatment as well. So our findings of the report, we identified seventy-one kilometers within identified need as under the inventory manual. So these needs are, this is language from the inventory manual. They're now, they're one to five-year, and they're six to ten-year needs. That's not given, that's not supposed to identify when you should treat them. That's supposed to identify at what point will they become a now need. So a now need means that at least twenty percent of the surface is suffering distress. John Street right here would be a good example of that. You can see the very fine alligator ring. Now, this is probably, looking at this, this is probably more due to an old pavement. It might not actually be that like when they do, if they do geotechnical on it, they might find that the basis is fine, but like, that's kind of, that's what would be like a stereotypical now need. A one to five-year need means we're expecting it to turn into a now need in one to five years. And a six to ten-year need means that if you don't do anything, we would expect it to turn into a now need in six to ten years. The estimated cost to treat these roads was eighteen point two million, so that can be considered kind of your capital backlog. So that can be considered kind of your capital backlog. And the average, but the average P and the, uh, the average PCI of the hardtop road system was seventy-four point eight. That's, uh, that's considered a fairly decent road. So that your average, even though you have seventy-one kilometers that haven't identified need, you're like, your average road is actually in fairly decent shape and you should be looking at, um, preservation or regular resurfacing as opposed to waiting until they become an identified need. And, oh, sorry. And, okay. So the hardtop structural adequacy distribution. So the structural adequacy, as I discussed, this is like, this is from the inventory manual. I just defined what those categories mean. So you can see, you can, you do have a, like, a decent mix of roads. You don't have any large bottlenecks coming, upcoming. But you do, like, in, in addition to treating these roads that we've identified as, uh, with identified need, like, don't, don't ignore these good roads. Like, it's not, it's not all, yeah, it's, it's not all just fixing things up. It's also maintaining. And the reason why we stress that is because numerous studies have proven that preservation management, i.e., uh, regular resurfacing, uh, other techniques such as slurry seal or rejuvenating or crack sealing and such like that are much more, uh, cost effective over the long term. Uh, the longer you wait to, uh, rehab a pavement, usually the deeper and more expensive treatment it requires to get, bring it back up to a, a satisfactory performance. And, um, that's, and that's been, that's been consistent finding across, uh, multiple asset management uh, studies. So to help with your budgeting, beyond the, just the capital needs that we've identified, we also wanted to give you a rough idea of what you're like, what your future or what your, I guess, your, uh, your baseline funding level should be. So we base, basically, we base this off, uh, kind of expected degradation rates. So hot mix roads, that would be a twenty-year cycle. So every twenty years you should, uh, at least every twenty years you should be replacing the surface pavement, uh, surface treatment. So that's a seven-year cycle for one layer of surface treatment. Often you do two layers of surface treatment at the same time. So it'd be a fourteen-year cycle for, uh, a double surface treatment. But we just divided it by two to keep it, keep it simple. And gravel, uh, through every three to five years, we just because it's a loose top surface, it's, it's very, it's highly variable depending on the road, the specific roads, traffic and other, uh, characteristics, but generally you lose about fifty to seventy-five millimeters every three to five years. And if you don't replace that, eventually you don't have a road left. Uh, so based on those, uh, kind of like high level, uh, resurfacing, uh, targets, you'd ideally have at least a, in your resurfacing budget of four point five million a year. So this would be your, uh, your long-term, this would be your stable budget if you also had additional budget to address your, uh, your capital needs as well. And before, we don't, we didn't price this out because it's, uh, it's difficult to price out. It's often done by in-house staff and although it can be contracted out, but just as important as, um, the actual road to the physical road or the actual, the work to the physical road surface. A road is not just a thin layer of pavement that you drive on. It's got a base layer of gravel underneath that that needs to drain. And so if you don't have proper ditches, the water in the road base can't drain. If you don't have, if you let the brush, if you let the trees and vegetation, uh, grow into the right away too close, you, it doesn't, it doesn't get, it doesn't get hit with the sun and it gets, and it's also, um, deteriorates faster that way. So ditching and brushing and clearing to keep the right away clear and the road base properly drained is just as important as that top level of pavement that we, we all ride on um, in the long term. So the prioritization of roadworks. So we, uh, for this study, we implemented the, uh, the inventory manuals prioritization rating. And this is just to give a rough idea of trying to compare, uh, maybe a road that's higher traffic, but better condition versus a road that's lower traffic but worse condition. So it takes into account both the, uh, condition rating, that's CR, and the traffic level, that's ADT through that formula. And this isn't necessarily meant to be a, uh, hard fast rule for what to do first. It's meant to be a tool to decide what roads to dress first. And these priority ratings are found in the, uh, in the data and the report. The road need study, um. So in summary, we did a road need study based on the combined MTO inventory manual method and PCI. So this is a, still maintains a holistic approach of the inventory manual, but also getting that kind of like that, um, kind of more scientific, uh, repeatable measurement for the surface condition. But we have a fully funded budget, uh, recommendation of six point three million per year to address all needs and future costs. Or is our old needs and also regular resurfacing. Eventually the future cost, if you had, if you spent, put six point three million dollars a year into your budget, eventually your, uh, the, the budget would come down to the, uh, kind of like the baseline resurfacing budget of approximately four point five million a year. Not counting any expansions or additional roads that you might add to this network. This is a quick aside, as part of our road need study, as a, as an add-on to the road need study, we also inspected all the standalone guide rail systems you have in your, uh, on your road network. So these are the, by standalone, I mean, they're not attached to a bridge. The guide rail systems that are attached to a bridge are captured under your OSMS. Now, generally these, uh, so as part of this, we mapped and we measured and we, uh, documented, documented where these, uh, stand, these kind of independent guide rail systems were. Uh, in general, they were in order fair condition. They did not have any proper end treatments. Uh, they had some repair issues and they tended to be having incorrect mounting heights. Uh, we do recommend that these systems are reviewed in detail, uh, including a, uh, look at the actual hazard that they're, that they're protecting against to determine whether or not they actually should even be there or if the hazard is less of a hazard than the guide rail. So I like that, by that methodology, uh, we would recommend using the MTO's roadside design manual uh, to determine that. But the actual, uh, yeah. And to calculate like the needs if there should be a guide rail. Okay. So I feel like I blasted through that pretty quickly. Let me bring up myself. Stop sharing my screen now.
Perfect. Uh, thank, thank you, Eric, for the presentation. Uh, nice summary. Um, I will, uh, just like to ask Ms. Henning, do you have anything to add before I go to questions to the counselors or?
Um, just to add that, oh, this might be really boring to a lot of you, but this is actually really exciting to have a scientific basis on how hopefully we can move forward with how we're allocating our budgets when we're looking at our road maintenance. So that's something that Public Works is, is pretty excited about having this report done. And, good questions?
Perfect. Thank you. Any questions by counselors? We'll see you go.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, it's not boring at all. Pretty neat, you know, this, it's scary in a way too with the numbers thrown out, right?
Yes.
When it comes to upper end budget. But one thing that I really enjoyed that Eric touched on was the pretty, forget the term, but it's like, uh, you fix it a little bit before the problem becomes very serious. That's something that I've always kind of believed in as well, right? I, I just think about it, something off the top of my head, like a storm drainage basin. Sometimes they're not really clear, so the water can't access it or it's clogged. So then the water pools and I can just imagine the damage that does beforehand. So would be nice if there would be something, some sort of inventory, right? I don't know if it's done every year. I imagine it is, but just to make sure that they're not clogged. Some of them I've noticed they seem like there's quite a berm on them.
Yes. Yeah, it is, it is something we're trying to address. And I know, like, for the past several years, the municipality has been doing brushing and ditching and trying to clear that shoulder sand away to improve drainage on our roads. And you can see it in the gravel roads that have been brushed and ditched. The condition the following year is typically much better than it was before it was brushed and ditched. So we are seeing evidence of that work.
Thanks. Thank you, Counselor Yegor. Madam Mayor.
Uh, thank you. Uh, first of all, I'd like to say how, uh, how awesome it is. How somebody who thinks this report is exciting of the works. So that's exactly where you need to be. I'm a little lost in it all. Um, I, no, no offense to Mr. St. Pierre here, but, um, I, I, that, uh, I, yeah, road maintenance is.
I know. Pretty boring.
It's an acquired taste.
Um, I had one question just on the, the second to last slide there. Um, there was a number of six point three million dollars per annual. And then it said, you know, if you do that, then you would get down to a smaller baseline amount to for, um, maintenance. So the six point three, how long would, like, uh, am I, I'm not sure if I even understand this. So, um, the six point three would have to be spent over how many years to get us to the point where we get to the four point five? Is that, am I interpreting that slide correctly?
Yes, I'll, I'll explain it slightly better. So we identified eighteen point two million dollars worth of capital needs, um, over the next ten years. So that's eighteen, eighteen point two over ten years. That's one point eight, uh, million dollars a year over the next ten years. Plus a fully funded, like, resurfacing budget, uh, which is, would be four point five million per year. So together that's six point three. I should have, I could have made that more clear on the slide, but that's kind of the basis of that. Now, obviously, uh, theory is not the same as practice, but if you had a, but if you were putting six point three million dollars to your roads for the next ten years and I came back and did the study, I, I would be finding that you're, you'd probably be at a kind of a more of a, just kind of maintain the good stuff rather than fix the bad stuff. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. That's, that was just the clarification we wanted, uh, and that, that makes sense with the eighteen point two million required in capital.
Yep. So, and it, just to be clear too, this is just roads. Well, we're looking at like public works capital, like this bridges and streetlights and all of those other things are above and beyond that number. Just, I mean, this is the dream, right?
Hey, thank you very much, uh, Mr. Chair.
Madam Mayor. Um, I'd just like to ask a question, even the way I am chairing. Is the pricing that has been given to us, it's current pricing? Because everything is, is astronomical in regards to public works or, or road work that needs to be done. So was that accounted in the analysis, Mr. St. Pierre?
Yes, uh, we have been trying to track prices as they increase. And it has, it has, because for about ten years, we had very kind of single-digit inflation. Or even if that for Public Works. Um, in this last couple of years, it's been like sometimes ten percent every year. Or something, you go back and it's like twenty percent higher, fifteen percent higher. Uh, we have, uh, we did, um, we did share our unit costs with your department, with your roads department or your public works department. And I, they did sign off on the unit cost. So it should be, it should be fairly accurate. Obviously, I don't have a crystal ball. I don't know what, how it's going to increase in the future, but we should consider these costs to be twenty, twenty-three dollars. And move forward from there.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much. Any other questions by councilmen? Mr. Consigliere Pedernay.
Here, Mr. Gagne. Uh, a few questions. So what, what time of the year do you, did you survey the roads?
I don't want to misspeak. I think we were out there in April. So that would be, I believe, when the frost was still coming out of the roads, which is a good time to look at roads. You don't want to look at them in the middle of August when it's been dried, when it's, it's been dried out and everything feels firm and stiff and nice. You want to be out there when it's, uh, when it's, when you're, when you see the spring breakup, when you see the, uh, the potholes really showing. Um, so that, that was the time of year that we were out there.
On the page eight, uh, surface type. Uh, the surface treatment, what's the difference between the LCB and ICB?
Uh, so LCB and ICB, so LCB stands for low, oh, shoot, was it? Uh, low something, low something venomous and ICB is, uh, intermediate something venomous. I'm sorry, I forget what the C stands for. Yes, yes, thank you. Thank you. So they're, they're fairly, they're pretty much, uh, they're fairly similar, uh. That's where you spray the, you spray the tar, you spray, or you spray the venomous, uh, tar and then you lay chips on it and you roll it into the chips into the tar and that forms your wearing surface. And often you do two layers of that. The HCB would be high class venomous and that's the asphalt pavement. So that's where you have the, um, the asphalt and the stone and the sand, uh, mixed together, laid down and compacted.
So the LCB and the ICB is two different method that you, you could do?
Uh, there, there are two different versions of surface treatment.
Okay.
So your chip and tar roads, um.
So what, what, what's the best? What's the best one of the two?
I, I think intermediate is a little bit more, uh, uh, beefier, but it's, it really depends on what the surface loading is. Having, uh, having, uh, ICB versus LCB, and that would be a pavement engineer question. I'm not a pavement engineer. Exactly, or not, I don't do pavement, uh, I don't do, uh, sorry, I don't do, uh, I don't do, do surface, uh, treatment design. I don't, I don't get that ready for the pavement engineering. Uh, so it would be depending on the, uh, yeah, so your ICB would be a beefier treatment, um, that versus your LCB, but it would be, they're very similar, uh, technique or very similar construction. Or very similar structures. Because in, in both of the, both those situations, the, uh, the surface treatment isn't providing strength, it's providing a wearing surface. So it doesn't, it doesn't, uh, you're relying on the gravel underneath the wearing surface to provide, uh, strength for the traffic above it. And the wearing, and that, uh, surface treatment just stops that gravel from, or stabilizes that gravel and stops it from, uh, rolling away or getting, or getting mixed in with sand. Just kind of, yeah. Does that, does that answer your question?
So, so the reason I'm asking is, uh, for future reference for the roads we're gonna do because if you're, if we're gonna get heavy traffic, like some roads, like Eugene and the Lake Island Road, uh, is used by a lot of farmers with, uh, heavier loads at any time of the year. So I'm asking because is one better than the other one for this type of use?
I think we have to keep in mind, um, too, that one or the other might not be available here as well. So sometimes these items are available across Ontario, but they might not be readily available in our area. So typically, I think we only have one or two companies that do this sort of work around here. And I, I would have to check and see what, what we typically ask for, but we're typically asking for what they provide here.
From a process perspective, Counselor, uh, I, I'd suggest to you that those things are factored in with our professional staff and our engineering firms. They take the road, they take the use of the road and they try and provide the best solution for the road. So that'll be up to, uh, Ms. Henning and, and her crew to get the best solution and hopefully it's available here in West Nipissing.
Yeah, and when we're looking at those higher traffic roads, like the, we're typically doing two lifts, lifts instead of one, so that we are putting more down to get a better wear for the traffic that's on it.
And one last question on, uh, page fifty-eight. Uh, you're looking at the Alouette Road. And your recommendation was it would be a hundred, uh, millimeters of gravel on the road, right?
No, I don't, I, this is, sorry, is that, is that your question? That, that was the preliminary recommendation in the report, I believe.
I'm, I'm just wondering how, how you get to these numbers if you don't do test holes or, anyway.
Yes. So we, uh, I guess I will clarify for, I'm not gonna, this isn't specific to Alouette Road. But our preliminary recommendations are not meant to, uh, convey, uh, like a geotechnical design. They're meant to give a, give your staff an idea of how much, if, if every, if, uh, on average, how, how much effort or how much, um, how, how big, how expensive the treatment we think that road will need or should have. So it's more, it's more of a budgeting tool. And so when they, when they get that, uh, preliminary recommendation, they can say, oh, these roads, if, if they have ten kilometers of roads that have a recommendation for a hundred millimeter surface or gravel surface lift. And it, uh, and they go out and they do geotechnical testing and they find out that, well, this road only needs fifty, this road, uh, only, or it needs a hundred and fifty, this road needs seventy-five. On average, it's going to be, like, the idea is that, uh, the, on average, it's around that budget number. But the specific, the specific road treatments for each road will probably depend on the, on the geotags recommendations.
Under is, is a standard that we're typically using on our roads.
One last question. How much is that the survey cost?
Did this report cost?
Yeah.
I would have to check back into.
I don't have the top of my head. We can get you that.
Please. Captain, that's it.
Any other questions by councillors?
Thank you, Monsieur. I appreciate when you mentioned that it's just a dream because I guess with our budget, I know you guys do a good job with the roads, but it seems like it would take a lot of money and so I guess there'll be some innovative thinking and planning involved. So we, I'm sure everyone in the minutes probably appreciates what you guys are doing at Public Works. So just a comment there. Thanks.
Thank you, Monsieur. Any other questions, councillors?
So thank you very much, Miss Henning, in the presentation. And like Monsieur Duval said, I appreciate the work. We have very nice roads. Go to a subway for a ride, come back and talk to me, if you go to Costco. When we can actually pat ourselves on the back, that's one thing that I'm very proud of in Westneffington, considering the amount of road we have. We're doing a super job maintaining them and keeping up the bar as much as we can with the budget that we have. So thank you very much for that and to all the public works people. So it's like, oh, and then thank you, Monsieur Saint Pierre, for the presentation and answering the questions. Much appreciated. Uh, not the budget side, but at least the presentation.
Well, thank you for having me.
All right. Thank you very much. Back to you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. Uh, we do have one more item under committee in the whole, but given that it is now seven fifty-nine, I would have a entertain a motion to recess, councillor Crochaine. Do I have a second or councillor Revard?
It is moved by councillor Crochaine and seconded by councillor Revard. At approximately eight P M, a motion was tabled for a ten minute recess.
Hold on a favor. Carry it.
You get to vote on it.
Everybody, uh, thank you for indulging us a small break there. Uh, the next item on the agenda for this evening, committee and the whole for Community Services Committee. And for that, I will pass it to the always prepared councillor Revard.
Thank you. So for Community Services tonight, we have a Christmas, senior Christmas supper update. And I'll pass that over to Monsieur Plaine.
Thank you, Monsieur Chair, through you. Um, I'm happy to report to council that we will be hosting the seniors Christmas dinner after a three or four year hiatus, a hiatus. Um, so happy to report that we've been able to um get the support we needed for caterers, from staff, volunteers, from clubs, organizations. And obviously the support of council as well. So the date for the seniors dinner will be um Wednesday, December thirteenth. Um, information will be forthcoming in the next day or so on where and how to get tickets for our residents. Um, we're doing it different in a different way this year. Uh, we are going to our local community organizations and our seniors clubs and they will be tasked with distributing our seniors dinner uh tickets to our residents. And again, I want to uh thank Sonia Hut for stepping up and helping us to, uh, she's gonna be instrumental in helping us prepare the meal. And um, like I said, we have the assistance of the um, and we will have entertainment. It it'll be a fun evening and we're excited to be able to put this event on for council and our residents.
Thank you, Monsieur Plaine. I'll open up the floor. Any questions or comments? Conseiller, this is.
Sorry, we raised at the same time. Through you, Mister Chair, just to confirm again, the age for senior. I hear it's sixty-five or it's?
It's sixty-five.
Okay.
Confirm that it is sixty-five years old.
Okay.
Thanks for that update, councillor Restol.
I thank you through you, Mister Chair. I don't really have a question or a comment. I think it's great that you and your staff were able to pull this together and talk about this in River Valley, I believe. And it's been a little while since we've had the opportunity to celebrate our seniors and it's it's good that we're gonna be able to do it again. And I know for me as a councillor, it used to be a lot of fun for being there as well uh as a group and another little team building kind of exercise there and taking care of our seniors for a night for all that they've done for the community. So I'm just looking forward to uh to being there in December.
Thank you.
I'll follow up on the, on the councillor Restol's thoughts there. I'm I'm pretty excited uh that that we get to welcome this event back to the community as well. Uh, it'll be my first one ever because I've been too young to attend, still am. And just by a bit. Um, but I, you know, I I do think it's gonna be a great evening uh for the seniors in the community, um, but also for us as a council and with our staff team and with other volunteers. Uh, I think it's gonna be uh just a fabulous evening of celebration. I am truly looking forward to it. So. And yeah, put your running shoes on because there is work to do when we get there, councillors. So, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Anybody else? Seeing none, well, I'd like to thank everyone within Community Services for organizing the event and everyone involved. And uh, I'm a little disappointed in the age because I won't be able to serve gay any food for a couple of years, I guess, or my parents. I was looking forward to that. They they won't get to buy any tickets on the lips of it. But uh, just in case somebody didn't know, I know you mentioned Sonia Hut and she makes some great food. So that's the owner of Sonia's Patio. So that's great food if anyone's never had a chance to eat there. So that's pretty exciting news. And uh, thanks again.
Mister Chair, if I can just add, I know you you mentioned Community Services, that department is near and dear to your heart, I understand, but it is a truly pan-departmental effort. We have uh uh folks from every department within the organization that are helping put this event together. So it's a big thank you to everyone involved.
Thank you and thanks to all the staff. Great job. Okay, well, that that'll be it for Community Services. Back to you.
Uh, thank you very much. Uh, moving on to the regular portion of our meeting. Uh, item six point one, consent agenda.
It is moved by councillor Saylor Ween, seconded by councillor Casey.
It is moved by councillor Saint-Louis and seconded by councillor Tessier. Be it resolved that council for the West Nippising municipality hereby approves the consent agenda for November 21st, 23.
Okay, questions or comments? All in favor? Carried. The next is unfinished business, and for that, we have the level of service policy for winter maintenance. Yeah, you want to do that first before I begin?
I'll go ahead. It is moved by councillor Saint-Louis and seconded by councillor Croucheing. Whereas council consider the level of service policy for winter maintenance at the meeting of September the 19th, be it resolved that the level of service policy for winter maintenance be approved as presented, and be it further resolved that the level of service policy for winter maintenance shall form part of the municipal policy manual.
I don't know who to turn that over to, councillor Gagne?
I have a question, Madam Mayor.
Yep.
Not sure who's going to chair this, but I had asked to defer and refer this subject in regards to specifically the private roads. I just wanted to add clarification of who pays, what's the cost. We did receive the cost of what it actually estimates of what it costs us to actually do those roads. I would just like to have a bit of historical background as to why we're maintaining these, the snow removal in those roads, and who is actually paying for these, on those private roads.
You, Madam Mayor. I'm going to make a guess, but being Max, the 2,000-year-old mouse, no comments, councillor Reeder. It happened in around 2006 to 2007, I'm going to guess, and it was a council decision at the time, wherein it was very early in amalgamation, and they were indicating that there were a lot of roads that were private roads, that were, you know, had all of these nice places, but, you know, the argument was that they're not getting anything for their taxes because we're not plowing the roads. I'm not suggesting I agree with that. But that at that time, the decision was made that we would enter into agreements to plow private roads. The original intent of the agreements has, was never really adhered to. We would have petitions and we would get the applications every year. The original intent, a few years back now, 15 years or so, was that they were to be bringing them to a standard that we would eventually adopt. And so that really hasn't transpired in any of those private roads. We have adopted or assumed private roads, but not, I don't think, under this list. I think we assumed O'Brien and way back when, the other one at the end of Ujain. Eh? Comore Road, yeah. And so that was the original intent, was to try and provide something for our outlying areas that didn't, wasn't perceived as to who pays. Obviously, no one does. Our taxpayers pay, and it's part of the service that Public Works offers. And that if there's a change of that level of policy, or if the chair wishes to bring it to a meeting, I'm not sure that we'd probably be able to adjust something midstream, but I think that what I would infer is putting it on an agenda for a more fruitful policy decision as to how council wants to proceed, whether they want to continue, not continue, charge something, not charge, or what have you. Or ask to re-honor the policy of limiting how long we would be servicing these roads before we were able to assume them. So I don't know if you know, councillor, to assume a road, we have a road assumption policy that if there's a petition and private road owners wish to have us assume a road, we would, our people would go make an assessment of what they would need to bring it to a municipal standard, and then at that point, then, and if the engineer and the Public Works crew were satisfied that it was at a municipal standard, then there would be a bylaw to assume the road. So that is basically in general, but that policy was tied to it, and it has not been adhered to.
Okay, thank you.
I have a charge. Councillor Tessier, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The winter period is from, ends in March.
The winter period is from, sorry, it's late, when there's snow? So that we plow it, and then when there's no snow, and we don't plow it. I'm just being funny, but weather, it really doesn't have an end like that, councillor Tessier. If we get a storm like that, and we service those roads as part of our road system, pretty much, we don't necessarily end. So if we had a big snowstorm in early April, and our crews, let's say, were out where I live kind of thing, and they were near Point Road, they would use my road.
Yeah, I'm not talking about the roads, I'm talking like...
Oh, in general.
Yeah, because you have an agreement, in the collective agreement, right? Every year that you say to, that the maintenance of the roads for the winter season is from...
4:00 AM?
The month, October to March?
No, I believe it's the end of April.
Pardon?
End of April.
Okay, for this year, because I know the previous year was...
Or it's either the end of April or the end of May.
I think we have a spring one too, is the thing, so it just continues on. So that has nothing, that really is tied to when we allow to deploy without overtime. Yes, we have an agreement with our unions and our employees that they're willing to come out at 4:00 AM, and it's not overtime at that point.
Sorry, it's been a long week. I just, I have one question. And I'll address it to Miss Verbal, but likely could be a question for Miss Craddock. For the residences that are on these private roads, is there, is there impact valuations, and therefore, the taxes they're charged affected by being on private roads? Like, does MPAC consider private roads in the way that they assess the value of properties?
MPAC is a market value assessment tool, and so they assess the market value. And there are many factors that come into that market value. Being on a service road versus a service road could impact the value of that property, for sure. So, you know, that could be a factor, but they're not necessarily, there's not necessarily, from what I understand, a formula that indicates that. You look at factors of each individual property, and what are pluses and what are minuses? What are the comparables in that general area, and that's where they have it, and that's where they assess that. So you could make a theoretical argument that if you're on a unmaintained road or private road, which is more difficult because you have to share, you know, and hopefully everybody participates in road maintenance and all of that. It's become, it's problematic in certain areas. You could make that assumption that it's more inconvenient, therefore, that market price would go down. But it really is not.
You can't point it right?
No, no. But as I indicated, I think that if we're going to talk about our private road policy, I know we're under a level of service policy, and I think we want to standardize that. But I think if you want to have a good fruitful discussion on our private road maintenance, I think it probably should happen as a separate agenda item, and so we can pull all aspects of it so that you can see it.
Okay, thank you. I have, oh, sorry, I have one question in regards to the second part of the memo for the snow removal in private parking lots. I guess I'm looking at the cost for the St. Margaret de Uville, and I understand the kind of history behind that contract, but the amount seems substantially higher than the others, and, you know, when you're looking at $110 per event on places like the Saint Commune de la Lavinge, is there an explanation for why the cost on that particular contract is so much higher than what seems to be the norm across the others?
So the history of that, for those that aren't aware, is that, you know, some long, long, long time ago, in another time and place, the township of Caldwell took on the school from the school board where our library and such is, and at that point, there was some note made to someone that led the school board to believe that we were going to do snow removal and garbage collection in perpetuity for that school. A couple of years ago, we took the stand that we were not doing that, that it was not in perpetuity, that we had, you know, there wasn't anything in writing, and so the school board sued us. And we originally won the case and then lost on appeal, and so the school board has us in perpetuity paying for snow removal at that property. It is their contractor that we're paying right now for that service. There is a clause in the agreement that at the time that their contract is up, we can come in and we can assume it ourselves rather than going through their contractor, I believe. As far as why it's so out of line with the rest of the parking lot removals, I couldn't offer a suggestion.
One of the theoretical arguments would be the fact that the school has a greater standard of removal to get ready for school day, and so they're probably more regulated with their contractors to when it has to be done versus some of their other parking lots that are done kind of, you know, when they can be done kind of thing, and as long as they're done for, before the evening, in the case of community centers, oftentimes you have that grace. So there's probably a higher standard of care that's needed. But again, it's, it really is a legislated issue, and we have no control over it.
Do we know when the current contract that they have expires?
They provided it to, the note to us, off the top of my head, I don't know, but it was sort of the beginning of a five-year contract, I think. So it'll be a number of years before that comes up, yeah.
Thank you very much. Are there any other questions before we proceed to vote on the resolution as read? Okay, all those in favor? Carried, thank you.
It is moved by councillor Saint-Louis and seconded by councillor Tessier. Be it resolved that council grant permission for the following temporary street closures for the West Nippising Parade of Lights to be held on Friday, December 1st, starting at 6:30 PM. Clark Street between John and Queen, John Street between Clark and Micho, Micho between John and Ethel, Ethel between Micho and King, King between Ethel and Queen, and Queen between King and Clark. And be it further resolved that emergency services be duly notified of the temporary street closures.
So just as a quick recap, Friday, December 1st is the Christmas parade. This is just to offer us the street closures. So maybe you have questions or comments on this item? Okay, all in favor? Carried.
It is moved by councillor Croucheing and seconded by councillor Saint-Louis. Be it resolved that the following 2023 budgeted amounts be transferred to the dedicated reserve, planning and building 45,000 special projects, economic development priority projects 100,000 of funding, and $180,000 of expenditure, and council community projects $10,000.
Okay, all those in favor? Oh, sorry, questions or comments first? All those in favor? Carried, thank you.
It is moved by councillor Tessier and seconded by councillor Saint-Louis. Be it resolved that bylaw number 202392 be a bylaw to authorize the sale of land municipally described as 74 Teal Road in Cash Bay and legally described as part of Lot 9, Concession 1, being Part 136R15136 in the township of Springer, 21000688343 Ontario Incorporated should come into force and take effect on the day it is asked.
All of the past requests, questions, or comments? All those in favor? Carried.
It is moved by councillor Croucheing and seconded by councillor Saint-Louis. Be it resolved that the mayor and chief administrative officer be authorized to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the North Bay Perry Sound District Health Unit in regards to the implementation of the Icelandic prevention model.
Questions or comments? All those in favor? Carried.
It is moved by councillor Saint-Louis and seconded by councillor Tessier. Whereas the municipality of West Nippising has received private road winter maintenance agreements for certain roads in the West Nippising municipality, and whereas the roads in question have been duly inspected and identified as meeting the municipality's standard for maintenance, be it resolved that the mayor and chief administrative officer be authorized to sign the 2023-2024 private road winter maintenance agreements with the residents of each of the following roads, Alfred Road, Arvo Road, Pellet Road, Point Road, Prang's Lane, and Seja.
Question or comments? All those in favor? Carried.
It is moved by councillor Tessier and seconded by councillor Saint-Louis. Whereas tenders for the front street curb lane rehabilitation were opened by the Director of Corporate Services and the Project Manager for the West Nippising municipality, and whereas four submissions were received, and whereas council concurs with the recommendation received, be it resolved that the tender for the front street curb lane rehabilitation in the West Nippising municipality be awarded to GIP Interpating Limited, having submitted a quotation of $827,258.04 plus HST.
Questions or comments? Councillor Gagne?
I have a question. Can I just get a brief summary of what's going to happen in regards to the work on Front Street? What are they actually going to do?
What are they doing? So right now, the catch basins, most of the catch basins are sitting in the travel lane, and the trucks going over them is causing a lot of damage. So the tender is to move those catch basins into the curb, and then we're going to also repave that lane, not the center lane, just that lane. While we're doing that, and we have MTO connecting link funding for this work.
From where to where exactly?
We are doing from Holdage to Micho Street.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Councillor Rehard?
I'm just a comment. Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is something that went out for a bid last year as well, right?
Yes.
So it's encouraging to see that, I know this doesn't really have to do with the budget we're doing right now, but now that we're doing our budget a little bit earlier, we should be able to get some more competitive bids. Because I think last year, this one was like 2.2 million?
Yes.
Or something like that.
And we only got one bid.
Yeah, so we're saving almost one and a half million dollars, just again, out there earlier. So just some positive and encouraging news for our budget discussions.
And that falls within budget of the, like, the original budget project? And how much is the connecting link funding? Is it 100, it's 90%?
Yes, it's 90%.
Any other questions? Okay, all those in favor? Carried. So that's the end of new business. We do have two items on the addendum for this evening, for item 7.1.
It is moved by councillor Croucheing and seconded by councillor Saint-Louis. Whereas the interior government is providing financial support for municipal road and bridge repairs through 2023-2024 Connecting Links Programme, and whereas the municipality of West Nippising will be applying under the programme for the rehabilitation of Front Street, be it resolved that council for the West Nippising municipality supports the application to the 2023-2024 Connecting Links Programme and confirms that capital funding is available for the municipal contribution component of the programme, and be it further resolved that if the application is successful, that the municipality will proceed with the project in accordance with the timeline specified in the application.
Any questions or comments? I'll just ask a quick clarification. So this is the same programme but for next year's projects?
Yes, and so we're basically looking for funding, if we're doing the curb lanes, it would be nice to have a little bit of extra money to be able to do the inside lanes as well while we're there.
Okay.
So we'd be doing the whole highway if we get this funded.
And so that would be for the same road from Holdage to Micho? Okay, thank you. Other questions or comments from councillors? Okay, all those in favor? Carried. Thank you, and the second addendum is a proclamation for World AIDS Day. So I had a communication with Renee Valiant-Hall, who is the community health... a communication with Renee Valiant-Hall, who is the community health, and her community health program for the Community Health Center, and this is an initiative they undertake yearly in cooperation with the North Bay AIDS Committee and the Red Scarf Project, so. I guess, just going to have to find the right word. So the proclamation reads as follows. Whereas the Joint United Nations Program of HIV/AIDS estimates that 39 million people are living with human immunodeficiency virus worldwide at the end of 2022, and whereas the Public Health Agency of Canada estimates that of 2020, approximately 62,690 Canadians are living with HIV, and that about 10.5% at the end of 2020 may be unaware of their HIV-positive status, and whereas in the absence of a cure or vaccine, education, awareness, and the elimination of stigma are our best defenses against HIV/AIDS, and whereas this marks the 35th anniversary of World AIDS Day, offering the opportunity to raise awareness about the importance of knowing one's status and calling for the removal of all barriers to accessing HIV testing, and whereas we continue to work towards achieving the 90-90-90 targets and empowering people to make choices about HIV prevention so they can protect themselves, and whereas the UN AIDS Team of this year's World AIDS Day has let communities lead, acknowledging that strength as a community is needed to support those who are living with HIV/AIDS. Now, therefore, I, Kathleen Thornor Shaw, Mayor of the Municipality of West Nippising, hereby proclaim the week of November 27th to December 1st as AIDS Awareness Week and Friday, December 1st, 2023, as World AIDS Day.
Be it resolved that the mayor be au, it is moved by Council Saint Louis and seconded by Council Restool. Be it resolved that the mayor be authorized to proclaim the week of November the 27th to December the 1st as AIDS Awareness Week and December 1st, 2023, as World AIDS Day in the West Nippising Municipality.
All those in favor? Carried. And with that, we'll wrap up, just with a brief report this week. So as we've mentioned through the meeting this evening, Christmas, West Nippising Christmas Parade will be Friday, December 1st. We're all really looking forward to it. Santa has definitely confirmed his attendance, and it should be a great event as usual. It's always fun to see families on the streets celebrating. Our seniors dinner is Wednesday, December 13th, and again, I look forward to hosting that for the 13th. I do want to confirm that yesterday was the deadline for the delegation requests for Roma, and our esteemed CAO, with the help of Madam Clerk, has submitted five requests for delegations for the upcoming Roma Conference. So there were three that have been requested with MMAH, sorry, Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing. One to reiterate our requests in regards to the seniors' housing complex addition for O Chateau. The second one is a delegation in regards to the composition of the DSAB Board, which the, the Chair of DSAB has indicated that they would write a letter of support for that request, and the third is in regards to homelessness within our community. There's been a delegation request made to the Ministry of Transportation in regards to the Champlain Bridge rehabilitation work, which we all know is a high priority and a tremendous cost, and so we definitely need our provincial partners to step up to help with that. And the third one, sorry, well, the fifth, the fifth delegation to the third ministry is the Ministry of Health, and we've been working in cooperation with the Board and the CEO of West Nippising General Hospital to, for delegation on the needs of the hospital in our community and the importance of small community hospitals to, to municipalities like ours. So those requests are in, and once we hear back from the ministries, we will give an additional update in advance of that, of that conference, which is in January. So that's all I have to report for this evening, and Madam Clerk, if?
It is moved by Council Cushing and seconded by Council Restool. Be it resolved that bylaw number 202393 being a bylaw of the West Nippising Municipality confirm the proceedings, council, at its meeting held on the 21st of November 2023, shall come into force and take effect on the date as.
All those in favor? Carried.
It is moved by Council Cushing and seconded by Council Restool. Be it resolved that the meeting of council held on November the 21st, 2023, adjourned.
All those in favor? Finished.